Call to order the Board of Education meeting 16.07. 2.0 additions, deletions, corrections, or modifications. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. 3.0 is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7.0. It is time for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite our students Ahmed and Jenny from Crestwood Elementary to come forward and lead the pledge with us. 4.0 is special recognitions, learning report, and student representative report. So 4.01, we have our friends from Crestwood Elementary here for special recognitions tonight. I just said that. So I will now turn it over to Mr. Kit Norton and Jillian Holmes to present their recognitions for Crestwood Elementary.
All right. Thank you so much. This evening, we celebrate a remarkable young lady, Jenny Hoover, whose spirit inspires us all. Since starting at Crestwood, Jenny has made incredible strides. She is a kind soul who always ensures that everyone around her feels included, and her hard work and determination in school are truly commendable. Over the past few years, Jenny has faced challenges with immense determination and strength. Learning to manage these challenges wasn't always easy, but she has put in the effort. Now, as a fifth grader, Jenny is absolutely thriving. Her confidence has blossomed, and she's completing assignments that once seemed overwhelming. Her academic growth reflects the incredible progress she has made, yet her achievements go far beyond the classroom. Through her commitment to social lessons, Jenny has built strong connections with her classmates, forming meaningful relationships. She plays an integral role in group activities and even takes the initiative to help others, which shows her caring nature and maturity. Jenny is a shining example of resilience and has demonstrated what can be achieved with a loving and supportive team, hard work, and self-belief. As her teacher, Ms. Brittany Jewett shared, Jenny is truly a light in the classroom. Jenny, we are so proud of you and all that you have accomplished. You have shown us all the power of growth and perseverance, and we can't wait to see the amazing things you will continue to achieve. Keep shining bright, Jenny. Limburg community, let's hear it for Jenny Hoover.
Jenny, we have a certificate here recognizing you as Student of the Month, and then you can never have enough Limburg t-shirts, so we got you a t-shirt as well. And we're gonna do a quick picture, okay? So we're gonna go right over here, back here a little bit, right here, get in front of that plane, and arch right there. Perfect. Turn around here, we're gonna look at this lady right here. Perfect. Congratulations, Jenny. All right, Ahmed, come on up.
All right, well, we come together to honor an extraordinary student, Ahmed Ojo, whose journey and achievements reflect resilience, determination, and the power of a supportive community. Ahmed and his family have endured seasons of challenges and shown lots of courage in recent years as they've built a new life here in the United States. Through it all, Ahmed has displayed a deep commitment to his education and a steadfast dedication to becoming the best version of himself. Mrs. Beth Bridwell, who's here tonight, his ML and ELL teacher, shares that Ahmed is a diligent student who understands the value of education and shows respect to everyone around him. His kindness and positivity are felt by both his peers and his teachers. Mr. Fairley, your design lab teacher, he says that he tells us about Ahmed's willingness to start each day with a helping hand, arriving early to assist with classroom setup and always stepping in to support others. Ahmed is dependable, conscientious, and sets a high standard through his hard work. Mrs. Paffrath, your teacher in the classroom, describes him as a kind, self-motivated student whose positive energy is infectious. His strong work ethic and commitment to creating an inclusive environment make him a beloved member of our community. Ahmed's story is not just one of personal achievement, it's a testament to his family's determination and the impact that a nurturing environment can have on a young person. He has transformed his challenges into opportunities, showing us all the importance of resilience and the power of an education. So Ahmed, your journey is inspiring and your dedication brings out the best in those around you. We're honored to have you as part of our Crestwood family, and we look forward to all the wonderful things you'll accomplish in the future. Thank you, Ahmed, for being such a wonderful and incredible young man and a role model to us all. Limburg community, let's hear it for Ahmed.
Ahmed, we have a certificate for you as well, recognizing you as Student of the Month, so that's for you. And I don't know if this is gonna fit you. If it doesn't, let us know, we'll get you a bigger one, okay? But it might fit you. All right. Congratulations. We're gonna do a picture right back here. Right here, buddy. Let's turn it around.
Up next, we have Ms. Sandy Trokey. We are very thankful for the chance to honor an exceptional individual, Ms. Sandy Trokey, our Flyers Club Coordinator, and our 2324 Support Staff Person of the Year. As Ms. Sandy to our students, she embodies everything a parent could hope for in a caregiver. She not only eases the burden of those rushed mornings and late pickups, but she also brings a unique warmth that reassures parents their children are in the best of hands. Every morning when we walk into the gym, we're greeted by her big, welcoming smile, and you can see it in the students' faces. They're happy, connected, comfortable, and starting their day in the best possible way. Ms. Sandy's impact on our school goes far beyond her role. She's had a challenging year personally, courageously battling and beating cancer. And since... Woo, yeah, that's a celebration! And since then, she's been here every day, showing up not only with a smile, but also with an energy that lifts everyone around her. She truly loves what she does, and that love is returned to her by our students and staff. She knows so much about each and every child under her care, and there's a special connection and mutual respect that is rare to see. Ms. Sandy is more than just a part of our support staff, she's part of what makes Crestwood feel like home. Her presence contributes to the welcoming family atmosphere that defines our school, and her enthusiasm for fun, like singing the Friday song with the kids, brings a sense of joy that's infectious. She's a shining example for her Flyers Club staff, guiding them with patience and heart and ensuring that every child she interacts with feels valued and seen. Tonight, it's our privilege to recognize Ms. Sandy as one of the finest members of our Crestwood family. Her kindness, resilience, and unwavering dedication make her a vital part of our school community, and we are incredibly fortunate to have her here with us. Thank you, Ms. Sandy, for everything you do. Your impact is truly immeasurable, and you are deeply appreciated by all of us. Limburg community, let's hear it for Sandy Trokey, Crestwood Support Staff of the Year.
Sandy, congratulations. We have a certificate recognizing you as the Staff Person of the Year, and then a $30 gift certificate to our online Spiritware store, so congratulations. And then we're gonna do a quick picture as well, right back here. He'll show them that. There you go. Spot, right? It's a good spot. Oh, wait. There you go.
Okay, and Wendy Dupree, you're up next. Well, thank you again for the opportunity to recognize an outstanding educator who truly embodies the spirit of Crestwood Elementary, our Teacher of the Year, Wendy Dupree. Wendy has been an invaluable part of our school, and when the elementary schools merged some years ago, she chose to call Crestwood home. Her decision has been a blessing for us all since then. Wendy is the ultimate team player, someone who steps up whenever and wherever she's needed. She has moved from second grade to teaching virtually and then back to first grade, always with a positive attitude, even when we were doing virtual, right? As a teammate, Wendy shares everything she has, lending her ear, offering advice, and providing a calming presence for everyone around her. Her kindness, generosity, and willingness to support others make her a pillar of our school community. But it's her incredible skill as a teacher that truly sets her apart. Wendy thoughtfully crafts her lessons to reach every student, setting a pace that allows every child to thrive. She has a remarkable ability to tune into the unique needs of her students, adapting her teaching to ensure that each one reaches their full potential. Watching her in action, teachers quickly learn what it means to be an intuitive, compassionate educator. In her classroom, Wendy creates a safe and nurturing space where everyone knows that they are valued and cared for. From a current staff person, here's a quote, "She's taught both of my boys, and I can say firsthand she leaves a lasting impact on our students and their families. Wendy's warm heart, her attention to detail, and her love for teaching make her a treasure for Crestwood." End quote. Though she shies away from the spotlight, you can't shy away tonight, it's clear that Wendy Dupree deserves this recognition. She is beloved by students, respected by colleagues, and admired by parents. It's a tremendous honor to celebrate her as Crestwood's Teacher of the Year. Wendy, thank you for everything you do to make our school a better place. Limburg community, let's hear it for Wendy Dupree, our Teacher of the Year.
Wendy, congratulations. We have this certificate recognizing you as Teacher of the Year, and then also a $30 gift certificate. So congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll do a picture right back here.
So next on the agenda, 4.02, Crestwood Elementary will present their learning report to us. This is new, fun, and exciting, but it allows you more information about the school and their operations.
All right, I'll speak a little closer. There we go. I knocked over this tissue box, you're gonna be in trouble. All right, don't count that on our time yet, right? All right. Our first slide is a graphic outlining Crestwood's plan to ensure students meet skills in each content area of math, reading, and writing. On the left side of the screen, you'll find some scores from last spring. You can see Crestwood's end-of-year NWEA score in math and reading, with a goal for 80% of students meeting average to high average. Though we made great strides in reading instruction, we were just short of the goal last year, but we aim to meet our goal of 80% this year. On the right side of the slide shows a network of system shifts within our action plan to address student growth and achievement at Crestwood. Each system in the network we've outlined here is aimed at strengthening Crestwood's professional learning community, which is centered atop of the network image. Now below that is our PLC team meeting process, which is grounded in teams setting data-driven goals for students, focusing on targeted outcomes, and the effective use of assessments to measure progress. Across the bottom of the web graphic are three key areas that power our PLC engine at Crestwood. As a district, we introduced the Model of Instruction, or MOI, this year, which emphasizes active student engagement, structured lesson delivery, and a consistent focus on feedback. This year, as a whole staff professional learning community, our one thing is to professionally grow in the area of feedback. Crestwood has also restructured our multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. We've restructured that process to provide clearer expectations for teachers and a more responsive support team. A school-wide practice that we're implementing is cross-class flexible grouping this year. Flex grouping, it allows teacher teams to group students based on specific learning needs within each standard. This flexible approach enables targeted instruction, promotes collaboration, and maximizes student growth across all focus areas. Since this is new to a majority of our teams, math is our trimester-one focus for this work.
Next slide. We want to show you some of our data from fall to spring to help articulate our plan. This set of most recent fall scores gives us some opportunities to approve upon throughout the remaining months of the school year, knowing that end-of-year outcomes are intended to grow each student using the strategies and structures we outlined in our first slide. These two images show the same math data from each grade level, just formatted differently for ease of viewing. Our goal is always to take each student and move them up in their readiness level, moving reds to yellows and yellows to greens, focusing on growth from all baseline scores. Each grade-level team at Crestwood is setting its own SMART goal around student achievement and growth. This trimester, the SMART goals will be focused on a targeted math standard by each grade level. The teacher teams will create their goals with at least 80% of students mastering expectations on that specific standard. We have an example of this with student goal-setting coming up in a few slides. This trimester, teachers chose math standards to focus on to refine our PLC system as a whole school. However, we will be doing the same work in other content areas. Next slide. This image shows a breakdown of our demographic groups. Among other demographic groups, this image shows our Black or African-American population and Hispanic-Latino population in the area of math. The columns are paired together by grouping from last fall to last spring. While we celebrate success in moving a large portion of our Black and African-American students out of red levels, leaving only single digits by the spring of last year, we also left 21% of our Hispanic students without any growth out of red levels. We want to use breakdown data like this more often with our PLCs to facilitate identifying students needing additional support and target the most crucial skills they need to grow in. Flex groups allow our teams the opportunity to know who the students are and to know what skills they need. In the accompanying report, we highlight further demographic data in the area of reading since our discussion this evening focuses on math.
Next slide. This slide is an image of Crestwood's prioritized math standards for grades K through 5. Each grade-level teacher posts these images in their classrooms so students can better know the essential standards or learning targets for the year in that particular grade. The entire set of Crestwood's priorities standards are linked in our addendum learning report, should you like to see our top priority standards for each content area in reading and writing as well. Next slide. These two images show students uploading evidence of their standards-based mastery into their digital data binders in the area of math. They will use this evidence to create academic goals with their teachers for the first trimester and track their progress. Next slide. This is an up-close image of an individual student's data binder with uploaded evidence of standards-based mastery. The bottom-left corner is a teacher-embedded image of the proficiency scales for a content standard, in this case, its volume. On the top-right side, this particular student has uploaded images of their work for each one-on-one check-in with their teacher.
Next slide. Within our compass plan, we've also committed ourselves for at least the next five years to focus on executive functioning skills in grades K through 5. Through a variety of strategies taught and modeled by our school counselors, we are improving students' working memory, mental flexibility, and self-control. These executive functioning skills are the cornerstone of the Limburg life-success skill of work ethic and effort. Show and tell me your plan is a strategy that helps students strengthen their nonverbal working memory by teaching them to think in pictures. Using photographs of completed tasks, students can mentally break down the steps needed to achieve a goal, helping them grasp the whole process before focusing on individual parts. Next slide. Here's an example of our fifth graders putting that strategy into action to clean their cubbies and keep them organized.
Keep them organized, that's the key, right? Yeah. All right, next slide, please. Get Ready, Do Done is another strategy teachers are using at Crestwood to help students improve their executive functioning skills by teaching them to start a process with the end goal in mind. By visualizing what a completed task looks like, students can plan backward, identify the necessary steps to organize their actions to reach that outcome, and foster critical thinking skills. This image illustrates how our first-grade teacher team outlined each step of Get Ready, Do Done with their students. Next slide. And here's an example of students using that strategy to complete a step of a larger process.
Next slide. At Crestwood, we encourage and support our teachers to experience various professional learning, or PL, opportunities that strengthen our long-term goals of improving our building-wide professional learning community, or PLC. In our building leadership team, we have one subgroup that focuses on professional learning to provide options to personalize professional learning for teachers. The picture in the bottom-left-hand corner shows our fifth-grade teachers engaging in a full day of Apple Camp with an Apple trainer. The images on the right show a few of those teachers implementing what they learned about the Apple Freeform app the week after the training. The aim is to help students collaborate better around projects and learning strategies.
Next slide. Our building leadership team has another subgroup focusing on climate and culture, which provides event-coordinated leadership on school-wide experiences that take place during the school day. We also have our social committee, who work in partnership with Climate and Culture Team to bring our staff together for a wide variety of social gatherings outside of the school day.
Next slide, and this is our last slide. On the right side of the screen is some data to share back with you all since our last learning report in April, when we were in the beginning stages of rolling out our Calm Corner check-in form in each of our specials classes, art, music, design lab, and PE. In each of these classes, when students need a break in the Calm Corner, this form is accessible on a dedicated device for second through fifth-grade students to complete. Our two amazing counselors, Kit and I, all receive an email every time a child completes a form. There's a comment section available to students, and as a team, we coordinate checking in on students that communicate both sudden or urgent concerning feedback, as well as a pattern of concerning communications in the form. In addition to student self-reporting, the other images show our students engaging in our school and with our community. On the top-left-hand side of the screen is an image of a group of Crestwood students whose entire class was awarded a book vending machine token. They are proudly displaying their new selected books. The bottom-middle image shows our Crestwood police and firefighters building relationships through play with students on September 11th, when we celebrated all first responders. To our Board of Education and to our district leadership team, we want to express our sincere gratitude for your support in helping us build a learning environment where each student can thrive. Your commitment has empowered us to implement strategic initiatives that prioritize both academic growth and the development of critical life skills. As we continue to enhance our professional learning communities and focus on high-quality instruction, we are confident that together, we will achieve even greater success for all Crestwood students. Thank you for your partnership.
Let's say one thing before we go on. I just wanted to thank the board, Dr. Lake, and your team for having a dual partnership here for a full-time assistant principal, and also our great decision to hire Mrs. Holmes, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Crestwood. That was wonderful. Can you go back one slide? Can we go back one slide? Okay. At the top, it says student satisfaction. I was supposed to let you all know that these slides are based upon Limburg's success measures. So each slide would have had one of our six success measures, correct? Yes. So, anyway. We will move on now to 4.03, Student Board Representative Report, and Ms. Laura Pimentel.
All right. So I'm gonna just get right into it, because the last month has been really busy for students up at the high school. So October started out really strong with Stuko helping host our 2024 Homecoming Week. On Monday, we had Powderpuff, where for the second year in a row, a junior team won the championship, not the seniors. And I'll pretend like that doesn't sting at all, but like, whatever. Congratulations to our winners and everyone who participated. On Friday, we had our Homecoming pep rally at the high school, which went really well. And then on Saturday, we had our Homecoming Parade, Football Game, and Dance, all in one day. And despite the time crunch, every single event went very smoothly, and it was really nice seeing our whole community come together. Additionally, last Thursday was opening night for our fall play, The Mouse Trap. I had the pleasure of seeing our play over the weekend, and it was really incredible to see firsthand the dedication and the hard work of our theater department. It's a classic Agatha Christie murder mystery story, perfect for the fall weather, extremely well put together, and if you didn't see it, you were missing out. On a similar note, we had six students from the high school get selected for the All-Suburban Mixed Honor Choir. We had three students get selected for the All-Suburban Treble Honor Choir, and one student who qualified to audition for the Missouri All-State Choir, meaning that she was in the top 20 of all students in her voice part who auditioned. And these are all really wonderful accomplishments for our students. Again, it's really good to see how well our staff in our district supports our fine arts programs. Moving on, about two weeks ago, the applications for Limburg Foundation scholarships opened and were introduced to the class of 2025. We watched a bunch of videos about the application process and PAC, and we were encouraged to start working on those. On that topic, LHS counselors Mrs. Keegan and Mrs. Keating will be hosting an informational presentation for parents this Thursday in the LHS auditorium, which will cover information about the Foundation scholarships. All students and parents are welcome to attend. Additionally, this past weekend was our 15th year celebrating Sunday Night Lights. Again, it's just another event where the community could really come together and celebrate our heroes. It's definitely one of my favorite events that Limburg does, and I know I'm not the only student that thinks that. It's just extremely heartwarming to see how much our community cares about these kids. And then finally, last week, I met with the Crestwood SRBA Committee. A common theme that I noticed throughout this meeting was the emphasis on how well our teachers and our staff members at Crestwood support our students and their learning. Every single student talked about the different ways that their teachers make learning fun and interactive. We also talked about personal preferences when it came to teaching styles with different subjects. Most of them said that they preferred interactive learning for some subjects, but traditional lecturing for others, which I thought was interesting. We also talked about the ways that their teachers support their mental and emotional health, which we kind of saw in that presentation, with most classrooms having a zen zone where the students are able to just kind of take a break when they needed to. They had access to books, quiet space, and stress toys, and I think it just further shows our commitment to the well-being of our students. And that is all for the student report this month.
Thank you very much. Homecoming was amazing. You guys did a very good job. So, all right. Just one more point. I wanted to let everybody know that we have orange on tonight, a ribbon or a shirt, just for Unity Day, so we just wanted to let our community know we were supporting that as well. And now, we're gonna take a short break. Of those of you who would like to, you can leave. You do not have to stay for the most exciting part, the board meeting. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move along to 5.0, Resolutions. We do have two consent resolutions this evening. 5.01 is American Education Week Resolution, and 5.02 is Limburg School's 75th Anniversary Resolution. And in honor of our 75th anniversary, I would like to read this proclamation. See, it's very fancy. I would like to read that aloud, and then after, we're gonna ask any former Board of Education members to come up and join us, and we're gonna take a group photo. So. Limburg School's 75th Anniversary Proclamation. Whereas Limburg Schools has been a beacon of excellence in education for many decades, guiding generations of students towards a brighter future, and whereas the district is celebrating 75 years of excellence in 2024, and whereas, from our humble beginnings, Limburg Schools has grown into a district renowned for its innovative approaches to educating students and students. I got to move that into action. So do I have a motion to approve the consent resolutions honoring American Education Week and the Lindbergh School's 75th Anniversary?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And pass is 7-0. All right. We'll move along to 5.0, Resolutions. We do have two consent resolutions this evening. 5.01 is American Education Week Resolution, and 5.02 is Lindbergh School's 75th Anniversary Resolution. And in honor of our 75th anniversary, I would like to read this proclamation. See, it's very fancy. I would like to read that aloud, and then after, we're going to ask any former Board of Education members to come up and join us, and we're going to take a group photo. So. "Lindbergh School's 75th Anniversary Proclamation. Whereas Lindbergh Schools has been a beacon of excellence in education for many decades, guiding generations of students towards a brighter future; and whereas, the district is celebrating 75 years of excellence in 2024; and whereas, from our humble beginnings, Lindbergh Schools has grown into a district renowned for its innovative approaches to educating students and supporting success; and whereas, Lindbergh educators are dedicated to inspiring and guiding each student to reach their full potential and create a learning environment where curiosity thrives; and whereas, our students embody our mission every day, excelling in academics, arts, athletics, and community service; and whereas, through it all, our community has been our greatest strength, and the Lindbergh community remains united in its dedication to excellence and its support of our students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lindbergh Schools Board of Education recognizes that the 2024-25 school year as the 75th anniversary of Lindbergh Schools, honoring our past, celebrating our future, and continuing steadfast in our mission, excellence in learning, designing the future." Thank you. Okay. Let's all come forward and have a photo. I got to move that into action. So do I have a motion to approve the consent resolutions honoring American Education Week and the Lindbergh School's 75th Anniversary?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And pass is 7-0. All right. 6.0, Citizen Communication Regarding Agenda Items. We have none tonight. 7.0 is Communications. 7.01 is Calendar of Events. Ms. Fetter.
Thank you. So as you said earlier, tomorrow, October 16th is Unity Day. Also, LHS is holding conferences, so if you have not scheduled those, please contact the high school for more details. And then also tomorrow, the Strolling Strings are having their open rehearsal, so you can go check that out. October 16th, excuse me, October 17th, the middle school conferences will be held, and also the Dressel-tastic Performance at Dressel Elementary School. There is no school Friday, October 18th. On October 22nd, we have our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory. October 31st is the end of the first trimester for elementary schools, and then there will be no school November 1st, November 4th, or November 5th. Elementary conferences will be after that, November 6th through 7th. On November 14th, we have Student Life Board Advisory, and November 19th will be Finance Board Advisory. And then we're back here Thursday, November 21st, for a Board of Education meeting with a Board of Education Candidate Information Session immediately following.
Thank you. 7.02 is Report of Meetings. 7.021, State or Other Meetings, and 7.0202, Any Parent Group Meetings. Anyone would like to report out?
I had a bunch of Lindbergh things. I know, most of us were at the Homecoming Parade. We got to go walk together, and then went to the game afterwards, and some of us had to be back at the high school to pick our kids up at 10 o'clock at night. It was a long day, you guys.
Long day. Long day.
And then Laura mentioned Sunday Night Lights. So this was past Sunday. I was there. I don't know. I didn't see anyone out. I don't know of other people. I didn't stay the whole time, but such a wonderful event, and I love going to that.
Anybody else?
I attended the SSD Governing Council Meeting. We did more information on just the budget update, so again, I know I've talked to you all about it in the past, but they have started a new strategic plan to really focus in on the budget and getting their fund balance down and using those funds towards students. They really focused on their strategic priorities being their systems, which is data and staffing, resources, meaning using all their resources to optimal use, relational communications, and then internal and external engagement. So we kind of went through a lot of different departments, heard from a lot of the cabinet members and administrators there to just really talk about mostly like their teaching, learning, accountability, finance, and also the partnerships that they have with schools. So if you want any more information on that, feel free to come chat with me, or it's all up on Board Docs for them as well.
Thank you. 7.03, Announcements. Ms. Fetter.
Thank you. We will hold a candidate information session immediately following the regular Board of Education meeting on November 21st, 2024. Interested Lindbergh residents are encouraged to attend to learn more about becoming a member of the Lindbergh Schools Board of Education. Candidate filing dates and information will be available soon in the Call Newspaper and on our district website, so please contact the district office if you have any more questions, and we hope to see people there.
Thank you. 7.04, Review of Upcoming Board of Education Meeting Agendas. Ms. Fetter.
This is probably the last time I talk. We meet again Thursday, November 19th for our Board of Education meeting. Agenda items may include our regular monthly business items, the 2025 Student Board Representative Announcement, Board of Education Candidate Filing Information, Curriculum First Readings, Second Reading and Approval for tonight's First Readings and Policies, and then Dressel Elementary School is scheduled to be here for recognitions and to present their learning report. These meetings are open to the public, and everyone is always encouraged to attend.
Thank you. 7.05, Board of Education Member Appointments. There are none for this evening. 7.06 is MSBA Board Report. We will now watch.
The October edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. The start of the new school year has seen a large number of safety threats to schools. The threats have disrupted learning, distressed students, families, and teachers, and have ongoing costs. K-12 Safety and Center for Education Safety Director Bob Klosmeyer says that the increase in threats has emphasized the importance of having a solid emergency operations plan.
So what, the safety specialists, you know, they're busy with everyday activities, operation activities, and what they're finding is, they're realizing is that the emergency operation plans directly relate to the responses they need to take for these threats and school threats and different activities. So what they're finding is by having, by not having an emergency operation place, plan in place, or not having an updated version, they're scrambling to get those completed. And an emergency operations plan is not something that can be done in a short amount of time. It takes time, it takes effort, and it takes a collaborative team to get this thing done.
On December 5th and 6th, MSBA's Center for Education Safety Team is hosting a two-day safety summit titled "The Secret to Great Crisis Communications and Emergency Planning." The summit is designed for school leaders focused on crisis planning and will provide valuable insights, best practices, and practical strategies to effectively prepare for and navigate through crises in school settings. Engage with expert speakers and connect with peers to enhance your crisis management skills to keep staff and students safe.
We just started another school year, and already the nation's been rocked by more school violence. Here in Missouri and around the country, we're experiencing a significant increase of online threats of violence to our schools. Our kids, families, and educators need us to be at our very best on the worst of days, and the best response happens with a great crisis communications plan and when you're emergency prepared.
Bob Klosmeyer says that this summit is not just for safety personnel.
Well, there's a misconception out there that this is focused on just safety personnel. You know, your safety coordinators, your safety specialists, but it really isn't. I mean, it is for everybody from all levels, especially those administrators and those board members, because, you know, when the event happens, when there's an emergency, an event happens, the media is going to be involved. You're going to have media coming from all over. They're coming out of the woodwork, and they're not going to the safety coordinators. They're going to the leadership. They're going to the superintendents, to the administrators, they're going to the board, and they want to know, what do you know about your emergency operation plan? What do you know about what happened?
Visit the MSBA website for information on registering for the safety summit and more information on the emergency operations planning tools and trainings available to your district. Filing for the next school board election is only a couple of months away. There are many things that districts can do between now and the start of filing to prepare. MSBA's Associate Executive Director of Leadership Development, Kathryn Whitaker, says that this is a great time to start communicating with the community about the upcoming election process.
So candidate filing doesn't open until December, so you have technically two months to let your community know that you do have an opening on the school board potentially. You have time to let them know what it looks like to be a school board member, what does it mean to file, how do you file, and just to give them information about your school district in general. We've created a presentation that superintendents, board presidents can use to inform the community about their school district as a whole, and then also about what it means to be a school board member.
Whitaker also says that MSBA has numerous resources to help potential school board candidates from filing to election.
So on our website, we have a ton of information, some written by lawyers so that they know how to appropriately file and run a campaign, but some written by us, just again, trying to outline what does it look like to be a school board member, what does it feel like to be a school board member, what are your responsibilities. So we've created a module for candidates that school districts can sign up for and then give the login information to those candidates, so they can go in and have a better understanding of, now that you're a candidate and you filed, you know, what does it look like to be a school board member? It's interactive, gives a lot of information about the state and what it means to be a school board member.
Visit the MSBA website for all of the resources and training modules available to school boards and potential candidates. Additionally, you can learn about required notices, dates and times for filing, candidate qualifications, financial disclosure statements, and recommended practices from the first day to swearing in new board members at MSBA's Board Candidate Filing and Elections webinar held on October 30th at 1:00 PM. This webinar is recommended for the superintendent, board secretary, and other central office staff involved in candidate filing. For more information, visit the MSBA website. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to all who hosted and attended MSBA's Fall Regional Meetings. Meetings were held in all of the state's 17 regions, as attendees gathered to network, learn, and share with fellow public school leaders to ensure all students succeed. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in November for the next MSBA Board Report.
Okay. 8.0, Special Reports. 8.01 is Cabinet Updates. Joelle, you are first.
We had our finance committee, well, we had Facilities and Finance Committee this last week. It was the first meeting with the Facilities Advisory Group since our new members have been on board, so that's always a meeting where we do a lot of welcome, learn about the participants, and Dr. Lake, we talk about enrollment. That's always a good topic, especially for the new members, and Dr. Lake got to share his wonderful stories about Prop 2024 and our progress. The group was very engaged, and we have some good representation from varying categories of, you know, career, careers in our committee. So more about that as we go into our next meeting. The Finance Committee met, and really, it's a slow month for business, slow as it can be. On the finances this month, we did have a couple bids on prop projects, the financial statements. We did have a Finance Advisory Committee member last month inquire about our cybersecurity and how that was handled at the district. He is actually an auditor, internal auditor for a large corporation, and that's one area that he audits in his position. And so Sonia and Dominic came to the meeting. Sonia did a great job explaining all that we do, which is a lot, and that we continue to grow. At the end of the meeting, he approached me and said that our district is doing more than even his company is doing in regard to cyber. So I do think that's something we have to be proud of with the technology team and our cyber, cyber work. Other than that, that's about it.
Next is Dr. Tara Sparks.
Actually, Dominic and I are sharing now. He's taking, he's taking technology. So Teaching and Learning doesn't meet until next week. We're going to have some conversations to prep for our upcoming 8th through 12th grade task force around standards-based grading, as well as look at some of our plans for the revision of the Navigator, which will be coming soon to you. And then Student Life met, and we have a series of topics that we're doing deep dives on this year, and we had the pleasure of having Dr. Cochrane join us and talk about Diploma Plus, and really get some great feedback from the Student Life Advisory about how we need to do a better job of marketing. Specifically, one of the things that really stood out was the conversations we're having with families starting in middle school to help them start to navigate the different options that their children have as they are doing, really, starting high school credit courses as early as 7th grade. That is a reality. So as families start to think about the impact of that long-term, that's an important part that we want to grow for our families. So great conversation, great feedback, that will continue to help us grow our Diploma Plus programming.
Beth joined us for our Technology Advisory, and she presented the findings for the website audit and got feedback from the advisory. And then Colin did Apple Professional Learning. He kind of showed where we were in professional learning and where we're going with professional learning, how we're transitioning from Apple Professional Learning, and how we're utilizing Katie for Apple Professional Learning. And then Katie presented on, she created an SOP for Seesaw, so we could better utilize Seesaw. So she created an SOP so we could give that to teachers, so how we could better utilize Seesaw, and got some feedback from the, what's that?
Tell them, yeah, tell them what.
Standard operating procedure.
Standard operating procedure.
So SOP.
Remember limit jargon?
Limit jargon. So we're trying to create more standard operating procedures, and the feedback we got from that one was actually pretty good, because we kind of combined some standard operating procedures with some training materials. So the feedback we got was, we probably need to separate that out. But going forward, we want to create those SOPs for a lot of different things that we're doing, and then probably have separate training material. So that's what we talked about.
Very good. Dr. Brian McKinney?
The HR Advisory met last week, and we previewed tonight's board workshop material, which was the Support Staff Comprehensive Market Study Update. We also talked about the potential change to Smith RX for our pharmacy for the medical fund. Going to talk about that in a few agenda items in a minute, so I'll save that. And we reviewed, of course, our monthly personnel report.
Thank you. Okay. 9.0, Action Items by Consent. We have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.10 this evening. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.10?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Zero motion passes. So.
So the feedback we got was, we probably need to separate that out. But going forward, we want to create those SOPs for a lot of different things that we're doing, and then probably have separate training material. So that's what we talked about.
Very good. Dr. Brian McKenney?
The HR Advisory met last week, and we previewed tonight's board workshop material, which was the Support Staff Comprehensive Market Study Update. We also talked about the potential change to SmithRx for our pharmacy, for the medical fund. Going to talk about that in a few agenda items in a minute. So I'll save that. And we reviewed, of course, our monthly personnel report.
Thank you. Okay, 9.0, Action Items by Consent. We have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.10 this evening. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.10?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero motion passes, 7-0. We did have a couple of public gifts to schools this evening. So we would like to thank Andrew Bushway and Jubilee Church, as well as the Rotary Club for their generous gifts. Thank you very much. 10.0, Individual Action Items. We have two. 10.01, CSRS Cost Savings Retention and Separation Program. To open discussion, do I have a motion to approve the CSRS program effective starting the 2024-25 school year and continue at board discretion as presented? So moved.
Second.
And Dr. McKenney, have some information for us?
Sure, yes. The CSRS program encourages our certified employees to stay with the district, so it's a retention piece. It also provides an incentive to separate from the district at the end of a teacher's career. The district saves money when hiring new teachers at a significantly lower salary than the exiting teachers. The program benefits both the retired educator and benefits especially the district by retaining quality teachers throughout their career, but also controlling salary cost. The revised CSRS in front of you this evening has two changes. One has to do with adding peers, which is for non-certified administrators, adding that employee group. They've already been part of this program, but this is somewhat of a housekeeping measure to make sure it's articulated in the program. And then also, based on some case law, the cap, the service level cap, has been removed. And so there's not a service level cap. However, research has shown that that doesn't have a major impact on the cost savings portion of the program. So this has been a very productive program for the district and serves as a great recruitment tool when we talk to teachers about why to come to Limburg. And then it serves as a very good retention tool for them to maintain and stay at Limburg. So our three pieces, recruit and retention, and serve employees, this really meets all three of those compass plans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Hearing none. We will now vote all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. 10.02, 2025 Medical Dental Vision and Life Coverage Costs. To open discussion, do I have a motion to approve the 2025 Medical Dental Vision and Life Coverage Costs as presented?
So moved.
Second. And Dr. McKenney, do you have some information for us?
I do. So each year, we ask the board to reauthorize our self-insured medical fund. I will note tonight that it's been running at a deficit for the last several years. And the large reason for that is pharmacy costs that are going up nationwide. It's not a problem specific to Limburg. It's a state and national issue. Thankfully, there is a solution on the table that's in this program tonight, switching our pharmacy provider to a company called SmithRx. And they are noted for their aggressive price negotiation. They actively seek out best drug prices, ensuring optimal value before our plan. They seek out generic substitutions for brand names, which makes a major impact on cost. And by implementing SmithRx, the district is projected to save approximately between $500,000 and $1 million annually. So a very impactful change. The committee that gives us input, about 40 members representing all walks of employee groups, met last week, and there was very much consensus around this move to save the program money. So we are recommending this renewal as presented.
Anything?
I have one question on it. Is there like an appeal process for the employees? If they're like, said, you have to have this generic, but for whatever reason, it's just not the right move for them? Is there an appeal process?
Yes, so SmithRx has a fairly easy process for that. If a doctor writes a letter that states that the generic doesn't work and they have to take the brand name, then they allow that to be covered. Great question.
A thought I had, that I sort of shared earlier, the idea eater. As school districts, benefits are difficult because I'm assuming it still goes by the larger group than the bigger of a discount or the easier it is for you to get those. So just the thought, it's very complicated, but maybe we could partner with another district our size.
Well, CSD or EdPlus has a consortium of districts that purchase insurance as a group. And in fact, Limburg's looked into it multiple times at current Limburg's program, and benefits are still better.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to talk about that at all, Joelle?
I'd agree with your statement.
Thank you. Okay. There are no more questions. Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Very good. 11.01 for the record. We have two for the record items this evening. They are official enrollment, the first semester countdown day, and professional learning plan. Let's see. Upon review, if you have any questions, you can contact Dr. Sparks about the professional learning plan. If you have enrollment questions, you may direct that to Dr. Brian McKenney. 11.02 is Other Reports. There are none for this evening. 11.03 is Review of Board Policies. 11.0301, Board Policies BBB-2, DJF-2, IGBE-1, ILA, JFCL, JG, and JHCD for the first reading. And 11.0302, Administrative Procedures Review, Upon review, if you have any questions, they could be directed to Dr. Brian McKenney. Procedures are informal only. Policies will be brought back next month to be seeking approval. 11.04 is Residential Initiated Agenda Items. We have none this evening. And 12.0 is Recess. As we have already conducted our executive board session, there's no need for us to move to, there is no need.